I was reminded that I must say that we're opening the June 12, 2019 meeting of the select board.
June 26.
Oh, sorry.
June 26.
I read the wrong thing. All right. Well, we'll off to a good start. We need a motion to sign the warrants.
So move.
All in favor?
I'll second it, by the way.
Excellent.
So I'm looking at the improvement. That's what I'm looking at. You're pointing to that.
I know.
It's your fault. So while we're doing that, we also need a motion to approve the minutes of June 12.
I move that we approve the minutes.
All in favor?
We're saying it the second time, as a second amendment.
Let's skip to the liquor licenses, okay? Yeah, let's skip the liquor licenses and then we can go back for old business. Okay, we have a new business, Cohill's liquor license, we do.
Anything changed? I'll start telling you if you want to. No?
Second. All in favor?
Pick up paperwork in the morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you for showing up. Jason motioned and Rachel, I believe, seconded. And we have also four things here to add a liquor license. Same thing, nothing changed. So do we have a motion to accept that liquor license?
Motion second.
Okay, who's the second? Who's the motion?
Joanne.
Don't all point at each other.
Make the motion, Joanne, second.
I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Pick up paperwork in the morning again.
Thank you very much. We'll go back.
We want to find them right now?
Yes. Do you fill the rest of this out?
I will.
Or one of them has to be blue, is that what you're trying to do? Or do you want them all blue? I'll pass the blue pen there.
They have to be blue.
Yes, they know it's original. They forget they have color copy or something.
Uh-oh. Just like those behind it. Okay, there's a warrant.
The blue.
Yes. Okay, we're waiting for the blue pen. Just wing the blue pen back over there.
We only have one blue pen.
All right. There we go. So under old business, we have nothing to say about the road shoulder bike path. We haven't been able to finish up that agreement, but it's, we'd like to table it for one more meeting. Do we have a motion for that?
I would move.
Second. All in favor? Now, we just had a correction on the message from the selectmen that I would like to read. It says at the end, and thank you for our grammar expert for fixing things. Lastly, let, oh. This appreciation also includes Kenny in recycling, Bruce in the sewer treatment plant, Gary as the co-enforcement officer, Rhonda as our animal control officer, Ralph as our harbor master, Marlene as our health officer, Jim as our cat sister, and Patsy, who is always there when we need her. And that, we need to sign the original and put it in the book.
That is too weak.
What happened?
Close that up, the picture unit?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Good, good. Oh, we might, a motion to, uh, sign it. All in favor? It's gonna be copied by, but I'll take a look. I'll get all those licenses in the morning. What's that? This is the personnel policy. Oh, okay. So remember, we had quite a few meetings about updating the personnel policy? We now have it all in one document, and we need to sign.
You already voted to approve it, so you don't think of signing it.
Just think of signing it. Yeah, we have three places we have to sign it. So I make a motion, we sign the personnel policy as updated. Second. All in favor? Aye.
In a durable time for all.
Oh, God, yes, it was wonderful.
So there are three places here to sign everyone. Okay, well, while we are signing the personnel policy, I think I'll just make a little happy announcement here, and then we'll go to Dr. Brian Beal in a minute. So last week, we got notifications from the state that we received a submerged land grant award of $15,000 that will go towards repairing the commercial pier. So that was really good news. And I want to make sure these guys put their signatures done. It was the $15,000. We do have to put $3,750 for that. It's a reimbursement grant, so if we don't spend it all, then we have to pay 25%. But we have put aside the maintenance. It took our $5,000 in budget for maintenance on the commercial pier and expanded it for another $15,000, which I thought was pretty good. See what else? CD for Federal Harbor, sad. All right. I don't, I want the information for you, please, to read soon. We have a resignation? We have a resignation. We have AOS.
My goodness.
Stephanie Teswell resigned from Seafarver AOS last year. She just sent that she's sorry, but she needed to resign. We need to accept the resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. You want to say something about the CD for Federal Harbor?
Yeah, Federal Harbor, if you recall, there's, it's a property that came to the town of Lubec that's known as Federal Harbor. It's overseed by the Nicos Erudite Trust every year. They have an inspection of it and whatnot. Well, with the land, came $10,000 for its maintenance. Nothing has ever been done. I would like to take the $10,000, it's just in a general fund. I'd like to have it put in a CD for Federal Harbor, so it can get a higher rate.
Yes, somebody wants to talk to me.
Well, I just wanted to make mention that I wasn't able to meet up with Melissa to do the actual walk around, but I've been down there and have seen it. The road needs to be repaired. We're starting with the part of the bank. And we were gonna bring it up at this plan meeting Monday, perhaps looking for getting a bid ahead of this.
But we don't want to put it in a CD if we need the money.
Give us, give us some, let us get through this meeting, and you'll have a decision.
Thank you.
So why does it mean anything about it?
We can do that. We could table it till next meeting.
Why don't we just table it?
Make a motion to table the CD for next, that's what it's for.
Who made the motion?
Somebody did.
Seconded Dan.
So we have Dr. Brian Beal here today, and I thought I'd bring him up, and he would explain what he'd been requesting. He's came to the plan committee, and he, if he would like to come up and...
I have a brief presentation, but I don't know that there's time for it, to put it in perspective for people that don't understand what the situation is.
Well, you can certainly have five minutes to explain what you want to do for people who don't, who haven't been to the plan meetings.
Okay, I think that it would take me about three minutes to get everything set up.
Oh, okay.
How do you want me to proceed?
Can you do a synopsis for us?
Oh, I can do a synopsis.
Do it.
Okay. So I'm looking for grant funding from the Sea Grant Program to establish what I'm calling a coastwide network for softshell clam recruitment. Softshell clams have a planktonic phase, and they swim for a while, and then they settle to the bottom. And it's at that stage that a lot of things happen to them in terms of predation and ocean acidification and other things that tend to kill them. And so what we've done is to take a look at that early, early stage of the life of a clam. And we've looked at towns in the southern part of the state, in the midcoast of the state, and down east. And it found, interestingly enough, that places that are usually deemed dead mud, that there hasn't been a clam there for 25 years commercially, are areas that are fairly productive compared to the normal flat. And what we see when we put our experimental treatments out is that when we reduce the amount of predation that's going on, we find that we get higher rates of recruitment of these small softshell clams. And so what I'd like to do is to chunk up the coast into three sections, a down east, a midcoast, and a southern main section. And within each section, have participating communities. So I've reached out to nine communities, three in the down east area, three in midcoast, and three in the southwest. And eight of the nine have indicated the willingness to participate in this program, which would go from May of 2020 to November of 2020, and then again, May 2021 to November 2021. And what we would do is to place out on flats, a series of boxes. Now, these boxes are three inches deep, and they're two feet long and one feet wide. And they're lined with a very fine mesh, almost like a window screening. These boxes are empty, and we place them out on the flats and involve clambers and the local schools. And I have a letter from Larry Jones that I'll share with you that indicates that the school that's been working with me and the Down East Institute for the last few years would really like to participate in this kind of program, as well as the other towns that are engaged. So those would be in the Down East, Beal's Island and the Frenchman's Bay area, shellfish commission; in midcoast, Islesborough and Wiscasset and Bremen; and in the southwest coast, the towns of Wells, Scarborough, and Brunswick. As I said, those eight communities have indicated the willingness to participate. And in each, the schools are involved as well. What we do is we place these boxes on the flat in May, before clams spawn, and we leave them until the end of November, or the end of October or early November. Then we go back and we remove the boxes, and we find out what's inside. And generally speaking, we have found in the past that these boxes can fill with anywhere between 50 to 5,000 softshell clams. And that's what we're interested in, is what does the recruitment of these clams look like, and is there a geographic relationship? And is there, within a particular region, any kind of relationship as we head from south to east within that boundary?
The nature of the boxes is to eliminate the predation, is that it?
It doesn't eliminate predation 100%, because although the meshes are extremely small, what we have found is that green crabs, which happen to be the primary predator, they also have a planktonic phase. And when they settle to the mud, they are 1 millimeter in size. And the meshes, we can't get them much smaller than that, so the mesh is actually 1.7 by .9 millimeters. It actually allows small green crabs to penetrate. And so that's the other thing, we're also looking to use these boxes to get an idea of how to assess green crab populations. Most of the mortality that clams suffer isn't for clams that are an inch or two inches or even three inches, it's clams that have recently settled. And when a clam recently settles, it swims, and then it finds its way to the bottom at a size that is a fifth of 1 millimeter. And the green crabs, when they settle, are 1 millimeter. So the green crabs are five times larger than these softshell clams. But the boxes do restrict the movement of green crabs that are larger than about 2 to 3 millimeters. So that's what we're also doing.
So to bury these, we've got a few clams out of this.
Well, so this is not a project to use the clams, in a sense, to enhance the flats, it's to give information to the community, it's to give information to the DMR, it's to give information to the clambers, it's to share. And it's also building a network between schools within the area to share their data. So what we do in the fall is to take the boxes off the flat, and in some instances, when we place the boxes, they're brand new, they're made out of just wooden strapping. It is an extremely inexpensive design and very straightforward. The boxes are, they weigh 2 to 3 pounds when we start out. We push them on the flat, and they sit right on top of the flat. We just take a wooden lat at each of the short ends and pound it down, the laths are about 20 inches. We pound them down to the top of the box, and then we just hammer some nails through the lat and into the box. And that anchors the box in place. We'll remove the box, and in some cases, those boxes weigh between 25 and 30 pounds afterwards. And it's not just pure clams, because sediment falls into the boxes as well. Now, the boxes in other parts of the state, and we've done this in the Freeport area already, we've done it in St. George and Booth Bay, Cutler, Machiasport, we've done it in a variety of places. And not only do we get softshell clams, but we get a variety of other species, some of which are fairly rare, different kinds of bivalves, and also worms, et cetera. So what we'll do is we'll take the contents of the box and scoop it out into a small box sieve that has a very fine mesh, 1 millimeter, and spray the mud out, and then take a look at what we have. In some instances, there aren't any clams at all, because there might be a green crab that's this size in the box. In other boxes, as I said, we've had over 5,000 clams. And what we want to do, and the reason why we know how many clams are in the box, is because we take the time to count every single clam. So these boxes aren't any kind of means to enhance the clam population. And there have been arguments by folks in other towns that say, well, jeez, if you get 5,000 clams, what are you doing with those clams? Those are ours. And they are. And so what we've said is, you can have the clams, what we do need to do is to count them and measure some of them. And if we can do all of that within a period of time before the clams perish, great. Otherwise, what we'll do is we'll take the clams and freeze them and count them at a time when we have the time to go through and count all these.
So let me just interrupt.
Yes.
Dr. Beal, the reason why you're here tonight was because when you were at the last clam meeting, we had a vote of 2 to 1 for this experiment with the clam result air.
That's correct.
You left, the meeting continued, and there was further discussion, and we also realized that according to Robert's Rules of Order, we had not rescinded the no vote on the meeting before. I felt that it was important that you were given an audience at the clam meeting to tell us what you're telling us tonight.
Yes.
So when we rescinded the vote of the last meeting, we re-voted, and the vote changed 2 to 1 against. So I have brought you here, along with the clambers and Amanda, to represent why, you know, why was the vote changed, and what happened after you left, so that because it's not, I think, fair to Dr. Beal to not at least understand what the consensus was. So if anybody on the clam committee wants to, Joseph, you want to speak?
What actually happened is, when we held the meeting, to have you come speak, we had already had a vote on it, and that, the vote that we had in place was never rescinded before we had the meeting that you were involved in. So pretty much what it boiled down to was the whole meeting that we had where you were there was no input, because we had to rescind the other vote.
So where do you stand now?
How do you guys feel about it? No, we voted it down. We said if we were gonna do the experiment, we could do it ourselves and count clams, no problem.
I didn't change my vote. I stayed out. And I've been on the clam committee for about four years now, and I've learned a lot of things, especially how to deal with people. And there's been multiple occasions that I've mentioned Brian Beal, and almost got shooed out of the meeting, I was running. So eventually, I learned that it wasn't up to me to get them to change their mind. So last year, he had an experiment up in Pirate's Creek. I got an informal, oh, by the way, I had an experiment at Pirate's Creek at Fisherman's Storm, and I'm pretty sure the town was never notified of it. So I decided, well, let's see how this goes. Let's let it play its course. And I actually got in between the diggers and his experiment, a decision I will not make again. The problem that I ran into was stuff like this. Because there's many times, over the years, I pulled stuff upon stuff. Not to mention how many nets I've thrown up at the high tide mark, above the high tide mark, because that's where they were.
Did we get a report on anything that happened in that experiment?
Not that I'm aware of. But to continue, we did a conservation down there, and of course, we have to put in a permit months ahead, about a month ahead of time. Come to find out, we were doing a seeding that day, and his experiment was right in the middle where our permit was. So we had to kind of venture off of our permit, which I eventually told Heidi, so we're all cool on that. But I decided to take the opportunity to bring the diggers down and explain to them what was going on, as I had been picking up stuff that was left behind, like zip ties and pegs. You want to know how embarrassing that is? Pirate's Creek ended up opening about, what was it, June, May 19th?
Yeah.
And there's an area within the experiment that it took three diggers a half hour to come up with a pack of clams while they were digging two to three buoys all the way around it. I'm sorry, if there's any good faith, I couldn't say yes.
It sounded like there was definitely a communication problem from the get-go, you know, in terms of you not knowing what each other are doing. But at this point, what Dr. Beal proposes is more for the university and for the future of the clamming industry. So I would, I have no problem with what you're doing, but I think the communication is imperative, because the clambers earn their living on those flats. This is an experiment for you, this is a research, and that's fine. It's all necessary, but you can't talk out of context, you have to communicate. So having said that, can we have an agreement to do that?
Absolutely. I was under the impression, when I started the experiment, and this is the, I've been working in 2005, 2007 timeframe to 2009 in Lubec. I think that at that time, it was a different shellfish committee. I was actually given a key to the Johnson's Bay, down that road near due east, to get to the flats. And the agreement that I had with that, with the previous shellfish committee was, you're very welcome, Dr. Beal, to come and do your work. And, you know, it's never an intention to leave any experimental units behind, and I would gladly have been able to come back and say, well, geez, if those, and that's definitely one of my units, that somehow got away, we put, we put over, I don't know, 300 or 400 of those out, and we got back over 95% of them. But it is, it is an embarrassment, I agree, Amanda, but it was never an intention, and if you knew that they were there, I never got a phone call from you that says, come on down, we found them.
No, this I found when Pirate's Creek opened.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that it's very dramatic to bring this in tonight and show everybody that it's one of my units. And all I'm saying is, is that that kind of thing happens. I mean, how many lobster fishermen's gear goes awry in a storm and washes up on the beach? And I don't see anyone coming in here and complaining that, you know, here's, you know, Joe Smith's lobster buoy. It happens, and it's part of, you know, coastal life. And I apologize for that, but, you know, I can't feel badly, because we got over 95% of them back. We did miss some, and I don't know how many of those that you found, but I'm happy to come down and take them away. If you want to give me that tonight, if you want to leave it as a souvenir for you and the town, it, you know, it's fine. But, you know, it's not my intention to do any littering at all. It's my intention to find information.
You said you had a letter from Larry.
I do, I have a letter from Larry Jones.
You better read the letters than tracing them. Nancy has.
I would, it's brief, I could read it if you'd like. So Larry says, Dear Dr. Brian Beal, the Lubec Consolidated School, the pre-K through eighth grade, has been working with the Down East Institute to provide our students access to marine science and marine-related hands-on activities for the past few years. We're interested in working with you and the Down East Institute staff as participants in the two-year coastwide softshell clam recruitment monitoring network. We understand that the project would be examining the young-of-the-year clams that settle and grow in recruitment boxes that would help, that we would help deploy at two intertidal flats in the town of Lubec in both May of 2020 and 2021. Boxes would remain on the flats at both locations until November of those years. This encompasses the time prior to spawning and after settlement occurs. Students and staff here at the school would help process the contents of the boxes, 16 one foot by two foot by three inch deep and lined on top and bottom with a heavy-duty window screening that excludes most predators, and that those boxes consist, and the study consists of counting all the clams and measuring a subsample from each box. The exciting part of doing this extends not only to our classroom, but in the richness built into the study design that will involve schoolchildren in the other eight communities where the project will be ongoing. This will provide us an opportunity to share our data with other schools across the coast and compare and contrast our results with those in other communities. We wish you luck with the proposal process, and that's what I'm going for, is it's a proposal, and look forward to working with you, Lubec clambers, and other students from around the state. So I've made three copies of that. I thought there were three selectmen, sorry.
We're multiplying.
Yes. And this is just kind of like a poster that the books at Down East Institute made for the, how we use the boxes. I made five of those, I don't know.
I think the other thing that happened at the meeting was, they did discuss a particular area that they were thinking of letting you use that wasn't, there hadn't been no clams there for 25 years, and then a polluted area.
I thought that the decision, before I left, was to essentially put them in two closed areas, so that there wouldn't be any problems with the boxes competing with clambers. These boxes, one foot by two foot, we would put 16 at one site across the intertidal, it wouldn't take up more than, well, I explained before, in terms of the area, it won't take up more than the area of a truck, a pickup truck, but we'll spread it, we'll spread it out a little bit.
So I'd like to hear from some of the shellfish traces on the committee.
How many should you say you set out? Over 300?
Okay.
Now, if you take 300 of these, you catch spat.
Catch what?
Spat, clams, small clams. Say you catch 1,000, not 5,000, or less than 1,000. So that's 200,000 to 300,000 clams that is actually disappearing from what would be settlement on our flats.
But that's not what I'm using for tracing.
Well, it's his turn. Well, it's his turn.
Yeah, but if you don't have time to count it, then they're frozen. We'll never be able to use them. The time you count them and everything, they're gonna die. And I think it'd be interesting to teach the schoolchildren what happens if you overdo a process like the shadia and how you can lose spat. Same way with scallop spat, because that'll get in here. Urchin, well, it will get in here. Lobstalaba also will get in here. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we have here in the bay that, I had no idea there was two or three hundred of them. I thought it was something, probably twenty of them or something, you know. But you take down Seashell Pirate's Creek, I mean, they're, them beaches give out a lot of spat. And a lot more than other beaches. You can get down there, there's piles of small clams. I don't think myself it's that good of an idea because I think it's taking away from, from our product.
I think the idea of a thousand clams and then a thousand clams going is scary, you know, because you can't afford to lose that.
Can I, can I just respond to this?
Well, we have one, yes, okay.
So, so number one, this is, this is not a spat recruitment box. This is something to protect clams that we were growing inside of those boxes. And so this is three feet by eighteen inches, so that you could probably put two of the recruitment boxes in that. So just to give you for scale.
Yeah, but by how deep them boxes were, it's about the same volume.
Well, no, it isn't. The box is two square feet, and this is three by two and a half, by one and a half. So it's, this is about twice the size of a recruitment box nonetheless. But the point that I'm making here is that when we put these boxes on the flat, that typically what's gonna happen is, is that we'll leave them there, and then we'll take samples in the adjacent area. And oftentimes, there's a hundred to two hundred times the number of clams in the box than there is adjacent to it. Because adjacent to it, predators have access. And the box, which is, which has a smaller mesh than that, is much more protected. In other words, most of the clams that end up in the box, and whether it's six thousand or fifty or a thousand, most of them wouldn't have, wouldn't have even survived to the point where you would even have seen them because they would have been eaten by predators. So this notion that we're removing clams from flats, yes, we are, but if we hadn't put the box there, they wouldn't have been there anyway to dig because they would have been killed earlier. That's all. I just wanna make that point.
But there would be a percentage.
There's a small percentage.
But this way here, you're leaving zero percentage.
The spat swims. It's not like it's just settling. It swims, and that could be sucking it up like a bag.
No, that is not, it is not a clam magnet. And we have, I have proof of that experimentally. I won't go into it now, but the boxes are passive collectors. There's nothing in the box that tells a clam to settle here. What it is, is that clams are settling indiscriminately.
Okay, so they're not attracted to the box?
They are not attracted to the box.
There's no feed or anything?
There's no feed. The boxes are empty to begin with, and all they do is simply collect sediment.
And how many boxes did you say you were gonna put?
Sixteen at one site and sixteen at another. And I, you know, I can stack up sixteen boxes on this.
What's happened, what's happened is, I think the lack of communication over the past seven years to the town and the clam committee, they feel they've been left out, or someone just marching around their flats.
And I understand that. I was under the impression that that was.
And how do you propose to change that communication? Because there are a lot of them here, and actually, four of the committee members are here right now.
So this is my second trip to Lubeck. And this is my attempt to mend a fence that I didn't know that was broken. And to say to the clambers, I'd love to work with you, just like I'm working with the other eight communities, and I've worked with those clambers before and those schools. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a great project. It will build lots of information that you can use or you can choose not to use. It's not my project, okay? It's a project to produce information that can be used by the Department of Marine Resources. It can be used by the schools. It can be used by the clambers. I make no money off of this project at all, none whatsoever.
But you are applying for a grant, and you won't get money for your, from that, correct?
And the money, and the money will go to pay for building the boxes, running around the state, spending gas money to go hither and yon. And basically to help people at the Down East Institute become involved in this, so that.
What is, what is the amount of grant that you're going for?
I think, gee, that's a great question. It's for two years, and I think it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, something like that. I don't, I don't.
It's federal or state grant?
It's a federal grant through the C-grant program. I'll email you later on when I open up my.
You're familiar with grants. Nancy, actually.
I still have a really unrelated, historically, you talked about you were in Lubeck years ago. You had keys and all that. So the studies you were doing then, what information was beneficial to the Lubeck folks in those studies?
So, so two studies that were done, 2005, Tracy was involved in one where we put clams and protected them from predators down below the South Lubeck flats. A lot of those clams were eaten even though we used netting by mud, not mud snails, but by moose snails at the time. Some of those clams made it to harvestable size. I don't know how many actually did make it. But the samples that we took and the information that I passed on to the committee at the time gave us that, gave us that information. Two years later, I came back with a larger study, just simply taking samples, just bottom core samples in many of the areas around Cobbsco Fay, and Johnson's Bay was one of them, and I used the key to get down there. And we were looking at everything from worms and clams and snails and looking at how those, the numbers of those animals changed through time and across tidal heights. And those are all, that's basically what I did.
Yeah, it seems to me like we're trying to fix something that ain't broke. Our clam flats have never been as healthy as they are now. And the sea there, instead of the average digger going down and getting three bushel, they're getting five. You know, just to splash money for them, but we'll be working hard, you know? Clam flats are in good shape. It looks like a hot shot down there. No matter where you go. I've never seen it anywhere.
And so we're not taking, we're.
What about the green crabs? That's not.
And that's another thing. Up in the river, by this time, a few years ago, they'd be crawling all around. I haven't seen any. I mean, I've seen a few, but very few. The seals are taking care of them.
The seals are taking care of the green crabs?
They look awful healthy to me.
Joseph, you mentioned that the reason why you guys, because you're the one that changed your mind. I don't need to put you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah, no, on the.
Because there was only three of us there.
Yeah, I did the swim boat on the last spring boat. And it was because our decision was never rescinded to begin with. And it's been talked about over and over and over.
And why don't you think we should have these?
And feel the same way, because he just explained that those boxes, he can take a sample and he wears around it. There's not as much seed on the beach as there is in those boxes, all right? Now, if you know clams, you know that it's not like throwing dirt on the ground. You know, they're not just sinking right to the bottom. They wash on the ocean. They wash with the waves. The spat almost floats. When it washes across that box and that mesh, yeah, it's getting stuck. It's getting caught, definitely. Now, you're telling me that you're gonna take twice as much seed out of those boxes as you are the surrounding area, and you're gonna take them somewheres and just let someone play with them? Okay, now, if you guys want to take and play with clams with the kids at the school, we can do that anytime. We can set it up for the clam committee. But counting the clams out of those boxes is not gonna help us directly at all.
I guess my comment is, it's up to the clam committee. It's not us. That's what we have a clam committee for. And they have to work it out between them.
And that's it, my suggestion.
So one of us sitting here, that's clam.
You've said you've done this with other organizations. If anything, I'd like the clam committee to have an opportunity to speak to the other towns and organizations. I mean, you're, to be fair, you're getting a one-sided.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of years sitting in this room.
We voted twice on this.
I have been part of other projects like that. And it never works out. It just never works out the same way. I'm not gonna mention any specifics, but it was part of a project years ago that, that just, it was completely like, you might as well flush your time down the toilet.
So I wanna go back to the green crabs. You mean, they're no longer a problem?
Those green crabs don't they, but one tenth of what they used to be.
Let me, let me try to explain it, because also in Lubeck, we have a very unique situation. We have the most flats in the state, and we have the most sediment diversity. In your soupyer muds, you're gonna have a lot more green crab predation because there, there's no protection. In our harder sediments, we have so much seed as of right now that nothing is growing because there's too many mouths to feed. And that's because over the last couple of years, we've been doing experiments with our conservation of prepping the beach for seeding. So this way, no matter, because once the seed is in the water column for two to three weeks, they can end up anywhere. They can, we might get Pembroke seed, they might get ours. There's no rhyme or reason. Half of it is depending on current size and wind direction at the time.
And the flow of the water.
And the thing is, we try to prep the beach for the worst-case scenario to try to get as much biomass to land on the beach as single time so that there's too much for the green crabs to eat. Problem is, we've had about five or six beaches we did way too well the job. And I mean, don't get me wrong, we have beaches that had not been producing anything for the simple reason green crabs are a big issue. But until we can turn around and find a more long-term massive solution for the green crabs, we need to concentrate on what is, what is providing the living for these diggers.
Actually, a few years ago, I had thought I had the perfect plan for the green crabs.
We need a bounty.
At the extent of boring people, I said, we needed to convince the Asian population that they were an aphrodisiac. And then you changed the economy of Lubeck.
Well, right now, in Italy, soft-shell green crabs are going anywhere from thirty to forty pounds, dollars a pound for soft-shell green crabs. Problem is, getting enough people interested in the triple deck.
So did I read, Shellfish Homestar get a chance to speak on this issue tonight? I think that it's gonna go back to the committee, and I don't know whether we'll stand with a vote or whether to reopen for discussion again, but we won't make a decision.
Yeah, I think it's between.
Yes, and we appreciate.
Can I say one more thing? If, oh, come on. The clam, if the clam industry is doing as well as it is, then having them take a few hundred clam babies is not gonna kill you, right?
Like he said, well, I mean, he said you can get five thousand in a box, and you times that by sixteen. And then you take all those, even five thousand, take five thousand clams and try to make them two-inch clams. I mean, that's.
So perhaps you could ask to limit the clams taken? Because I think the experiment is a good experiment. It's necessary.
Well, I'm gonna defer. I make a motion to defer. Well, I really can't because I'm not the clam committee.
What I would like to say is back when we did that experiment, where I was involved in it, I don't think there was a lot of honesty that went on there. And that's what's sour to a lot of people.
I don't know what you mean by honesty.
You know, the nets we put out?
Yeah.
We put out all these nets.
Right.
We put seed out.
Right.
Seed was all floating when we put it out there. Because it was, yes, it was. It was put on the back of the truck. Was gonna go to the hauler and put the seed in.
Right.
There was too many moose snails there.
That's correct.
So we changed our mind, and we took them behind the seed bin. Well, that was the next morning. And there was a lot of clams that, little tiny clams, probably half inch, maybe a little bit bigger, float. Well, we covered the nets. And during this process that we was all explaining, we would have two days where we'd get down there, like to remove the nets or do the maintenance to what we had to do to our own little plot. And there was gonna be the grant money that you would be paid two bushel per tide. And a bunch of us went down and finally took the nets off because they was growing slime on them, and we didn't wanna smother the clams out. We never heard another word, not one word about it. And that's why a lot of diggers is like, yeah, he's gonna save this, but will he really do it?
So it's back to communication?
Well, so you got paid, so you got, you got the nets for free, you got the clams for free, and you were paid to go down and sample?
No, the one time that we went down and planted them. We never got the other times that we went down there, like you said.
So I'd be happy to open up the books of the Down East Institute and show you who was paid and how long, so.
I think communication was at the beginning, but that should be closed off. That's between you and the guys.
I will make a motion that we put it back to the clam committee.
Back to the clamming.
That's what they're here for.
That's fine, and I appreciate your time.
I appreciate you coming, explaining, because do we have a second, second call in favor?
And I'm not asking for another vote from the shellfish committee. In our concern, the shellfish committee has spoken, and thank you very much for your attention. That's, I wasn't expecting you to overrule them. I was simply here to ask for some explanation as to what.
What they changed their mind.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beal.
I think everything was under the working back and forth.
I'm sorry.
I don't see a problem with the talk.
Charge land lease was.
I apologize. There wasn't any intention. There's never been any intention to win one of any money at all.
Goodbye clambers.
It just wasn't.
Sorry.
So, Amanda, may I take this with me?
Yes.
Do you have others sitting out there?
Nope, that's the only one of those I found, but there are a bunch of nets up in East Bay that threw up last year.
What did you say, nets?
Four foot by four foot nets with a buoy in the middle.
Okay, yeah.
You know, by the stick keeper.
Okay, we're going to submerge land lease with wastewater treatment plant outflow?
Yep, this is in your packet. It looks like this. It has sediment on it. It's just after the river meeting. This is something that came in the mail. I have Bruce and Kim Clark working on it. I'm just notifying you that this is in the works. This is not, we decided on it right now. I just want to tell you that the thirty-year lease is up for the outfall pipe. This is for the wastewater treatment plant.
Outfall.
Yep, which is out by the.
Every thirty years on the lease.
Right, of course, it's on our watch. Everything happens on our watch, so I am working on this.
So somebody asked you, because someone came in and asked me about it. That's what she's telling us. They ask you that it's something we have to do. A Project Canopy Grant Award. David Starber.
Have I made it to the table?
Yes.
Leaving a thank you. Not a lot of money, but I think we'll have a great impact on our community. So David Starber, and you have a email that describes what the canopy project is.
It was at Adal and Joel.
Yeah, it's right on the end. It is a cooperative partnership between the Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry, Maize Forest Service, and GRO Smart Meat. And the intent is really to look at appropriate forest management, particularly of public plants. Also increase people's awareness of the importance of the state, the wooden district, and our environment. It also includes some funding for planting trees. And so what we tried to do, and this proposal was combine all of the requirements that they had, but to increase the number of managing community forest programs, that's community by community, stimulate and heighten awareness, and I think that's one of our strengths, and create and maintain partnerships. They have a long-term goal of looking at, I explained to them that we wouldn't be able to send an ordinance in Lubeck for, at this time, but it does provide us a structural plan.
Who's paying the fifty percent matching funds?
We are, it's almost two-thirds. The grant award's around seven thousand dollars. I did some details of what you're already doing. Have very commitments from the public schools. I'll go through all the people that were looking at planning. And a plan that look at, how do we, one, assess, focus on all the trails that are in Lubeck, some twenty-six miles. some twenty-six miles, and the property that they're on. And also, we did working with the Maine Coast Heritage Trust, Down East Coastal Conservation. And what's unique about this, I had this passion for making everything eligible and as accessible.
Accessible.
Accessible, universal design. And so, what we highlighted in this is looking at one thing I've seen in other places, but not in me, having braille signage for information that in Kios were describing what the tree is. So, and I think that was of interest to the people I spoke to, that the, I wanna thank the school, the school leadership, because it was a quick turnaround time, and I've had learnings from our, not success of residential recreational trail building, and really did detail looking at, you have to provide evidence of, when you talk about a budget, with two people off, they have to go people specifics. So, we've attempted to do that, and also looking at education.
So, some of this is in kind, Matt?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not actual dollars?
No.
It's, okay, great, that's perfect. Sounds like a great idea to me. Congratulations, I'm glad you got it.
Well, I wanna thank you for supporting Stockard Park for a long time, and your staff, I was just down there, have you seen the new cables? They, they look great, yeah.
We're getting a plaque put up. Yes, yes, we are.
At some point, we're gonna get that plaque put up.
As a matter of fact, yesterday Denise Rule and I were down at, not Stockard, Skudik, and Jesse Salzberg now has that giant two-hundred-pound thing that was in my car. It, it's gonna go in place in the rock, and Jesse and his father and Jesse's wife were very carefully putting it in the rock, so that will be in place.
When will they bring it?
When they're done.
So, what we can do for you-
Looking at Stockard Park, the historical society, also the memorial, Ship Memorial.
I make a motion that we allow Mr. Stockard to work along with these other entities with our blessing?
Yes.
And that come back and let us know where the trees are. I like the little signs, I can't distinguish between one person and another person.
You're all gonna be at the plant, except for your picture taken by your department that forgot to bag your coats.
Oh, such an honor.
Good, thanks, yeah.
Very good, thank you very much.
So, second the motion, and then second the motion for giving him the-
It's nice already, lots of the time.
Who seconded? Whoever.
I did, I did.
And vote.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay, snow discharge permit, this one Denise, you want to?
This is something, when I first became administrator, it was a year of a bad storm.
Yes. Ah, yes.
And we got in on the five-year, there was like two and a half years left on the one snow discharge permit that is issued, and so it's time to renew that, and that has happened. We are already-
That's not gonna be an honor for another winter.
Well, analyzing the four feet of snow, we didn't have anywhere to put it, so some of it was, went into the narrows.
It gives us permission to put it in the water.
If we have to.
It worsens worse to, you know, find the kind of, of broad.
That's right. So, are we in the motion for that, or is this-
No, I'm just notifying you.
Okay.
It's done.
So, other business, I don't think we have any. Committee updates? Harbor Board, third, third Monday of the month?
Yes.
At six?
Six o'clock.
And what, what about Marion transport?
We're doing awesome up there, we just put a new scale in, fifty thousand dollar scale, and again, Lubec is doing really well on the pump.
Yes, we actually-
Eastport beat us by a hundred thousand pounds.
We lowered, had to, we were able to lower the budget for like fifteen thousand dollars on the, on the projection of tonnage.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's a lot lower than it's going.
You recycling things?
Were you throwing out a challenge there a moment ago?
Oh, they need us by a hundred thousand pounds.
Well, I think it's because of the ladies' house.
They're the same amount of people, Joanne?
Down East CMS meeting was on Monday night, we had a very productive meeting, they, they just, I can't say enough, they're doing awesome, they had three crews down here over the marathon, and we just signed another contract with Pleasant Point. So, right now, we have a total of fourteen members. Yep, we've signed on another three paramedics, so they are really, Down East CMS is really doing well.
That's good, that's good.
Their bill also went down, will remind people.
Yes, it did, yeah.
Went down ten thousand this year.
Renee, I mean, sorry, Rachel.
Yeah, sure.
I always mix these up.
Recycle will meet next Ju-, in July, July the twelfth, we did not meet in June, and as I said, Denise and I were in Skudik to drop off the Stockard Park plaque, but we also went to a rather interesting luncheon committee meeting at Skudik on Broadway. And it's amazing the support that's coming around the state.
So, as far as recycling goes, is there any, when the committee meets, do they discuss the revenues?
Yes, we discuss the revenues, which are dwindling, we discuss the expenses, which are accelerating, and then we discuss politics, to wait till two people get their big-boy pants on and stop the garbage that they're doing.
I might have got over my edge, but that helps.
Yeah.
Government, she's talking government.
I'm talking about the people who put tar-, the tariffs are killing recycling.
It's always cost, the taxpayers money to recycle, but now it's an epidemic.
And you have a reason, do you know any reasons why?
Well, the tonnage and, I mean, what it costs to recycle now, the trucking from Lubec is poor.
They're, they're recycling, people are not recycling the kinds of things that they used to recycle. I mean, and the one thing that this state has done has gone to no, is single-use plastic, which is a big deal. Anyway, I do, that is the most we can hope for, until there are some major changes. And it's almost out of our hands.
I think we almost gotta downsize and go with the cardboard and the, and the things that are bringing in revenue.
That's it, it's cardboard.
That's, that's the only thing.
Yeah, and that's, plastic is, is not heavy, so that, and you should be able to get money.
It costs you about, if you took the cardboard out of it, basically it would cost you two thousand dollars per year to get rid of the rest of it.
He won't even come and get anything out unless we give him cardboard.
Right.
So, he takes all the revenue.
That e-waste, but if you take the cardboard and the e-waste out of it, it'll cost you eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars per year to get rid of the rest.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's-
And we can't do that, the mix can't do that.
I mean, Marion is, is shot away from it, and right now, Mark Ray is, is charging thirty one cent per hour to recycle. It's just a market.
It is, you can't, there's not, you know, we're just gonna have to weather this storm.
Or start charging.
Yeah.
Get some scale.
And we still have the pulverized glass issue, which, you know.
That can, we can bury, I mean, we can put that in a culvert.
As a matter of fact, in discussions with the, the Salzbergs yesterday, they said they're doing the same thing.
We're about thirty-six thousand in the hole.
Burying the glass?
Yeah.
Where?
They dig a hole?
Yeah. Well, while, it's, it's not biodegradable, is it?
Well, sure.
Glass?
Over a period of time.
Glass is aggregate.
It's sand, land, is it not?
Yeah, but how many hours does it take to crush it, yeah, the glass? How many man-hours?
Is that legal?
Can I just, I'll be late. Do you have any idea, I don't know, like, in York, in York County, there was a big conversation years ago around the cost of tipping fees for compostable items, and like, there was a, you know, there's a push in some southern, to have local compost, but there's all complications in that, EPA, the EP.
That's all-
I just wonder what the hell was conversations, because I forget the percentage, but it was pretty significant, like forty percent of garbage is stuff that could be compostable, you know, and that we as a society do nothing about.
You will find that most of what comes out of the grocery stores around here and the restaurants, about ninety percent of it goes to pigs.
Okay, okay.
Um, there was a discussion many years ago about having a, a community or municipal composting.
Right, a couple years ago.
Yeah, and we were, there was a woman who used to live here, Brutus Jordans, who was very much an advocate of that. But many people in charge at that time said, we've tried it before, you know, and who did-
Yeah, we tried it in Lyman with, with real concerted effort, and it really got to be, like, it got beyond me in comprehension, it was by transfer, it was like leafs and what's compostable and what the EPA, the EP.
Yes.
But there's still that argument that we throw away so much compostable stuff that was-
The thing is, you have-
You've gotta have all the-
It's like a community effort, it's like a, a community effort, you have to have people who are willing to do, continue to support it. And I know, I was in a community where that, where that in fact did happen, people worked it, in, in the fall or in the spring, people would come and buy some of that compost to put on their gardens, and it becomes a very active thing, just gotta have the public support.
You can't even dump stumps.
No, I know, no, I know, it's, it's-
I have, I have an idea, wouldn't it be fantastic, not now, but in, in, in the fall, it's in September, so, that we have a whole recycling hearing and have everyone come and weigh in on what they think we should be doing with recycling, because I really think people don't-
It's on, we need to figure out, what are we doing?
It's on- It's forty thousand dollars a year for and for you.
Right.
You know, it's expensive, we're putting a lot of money into it, and we need to know that-
The return is not right now-
Well, we need, well, it's not all about returning, it's about supporting the community, do they want this? Do they not want this? Are they willing to cooperate and saturate things?
Right now, on a pocket, on a taxpayer's pocket, I, I did some of the math on it, it's about thirty-six thousand per year to run it, after the revenue comes in, however-
Recycling Center?
Yes.
You're part of the recycling center?
So, I make a motion that we have a public hearing in September about recycling.
I wanna fix it.
Do you like that idea?
Yes, I do, I wanna fix it.
Would you wanna second it?
I would second it.
Thank you very much.
Anybody updates?
Yes. Well, we still, we haven't, we haven't finished.
Yeah, put it online, because I didn't have it.
Put it in.
Do you have any idea about that place?
There'll be a clam meeting July first, this Monday, at six, the clam licenses go on sale, eight o'clock in the morning, there are a few non-resident clam licenses available, and you have to be here at eight, they're sold by lottery. There is a, another, there'll be a safe harbor meeting update once we get the grants submitted, so that will be after July fifteenth.
I'd like to thank you and Julie for all you're doing on that. You guys are doing, I mean, over and beyond.
Yeah, big time.
I thought she was gonna have a stroke tonight, I mean, she's just dressed right.
I'm not gonna lie, it's one of the hardest things we've ever, I've ever done, I mean-
Oh, we got the right women on it.
No, it's not that, it's just so, so massive, that, trying to pull it out of the air, to put it together.
I just got emailed the NERC permit application that Oscar's been working on, so that will help us get the grant if we're more ready for the project. It just came through before the meeting, ninety-five pages. Waiting, waiting, waiting.
Ninety-five more.
But it's done, you know, it's, it's with the, the, the fantastic pictures in it, Julie.
There's what?
Fantastic, more pictures, pictures, you're gonna love the pictures.
A lot of people don't understand how much time you guys are taking to it.
Did you get in touch with your friends, Pat and, and down there, down in Portland, that, I mean, you've talked with them so much about, and, because they know about all the fishermen that have been hurt and the money that they give to them, and they might be able to do-
Oh, yeah, you're talking, you're talking about the Shaw Foundation and, oh, Pat, you're talking about Portland Seaman Society.
Yeah, well, we did get a fifty thousand dollar pledge from the Ram Island Conservation Fund for maintenance, and we did work on the budget, thirty-five thou-
This Portland Seaman Society actually pays people in this area.
We are gonna try to-
Gonna be hard, you know, fishermen.
I think once we get it in, we're gonna, we've said enough that we're gonna spend a few months looking for more pledges for the maintenance fund. But, so there won't be a safe harbor meeting till after that, till sometime in July.
Good.
Yes, good. And, can we, public, public comment?
I'd like to, thank you. The town, for their, always their immense support with the marathon.
Yeah, that was-
It was hugely successful.
Which was a, a great success, you said, have the opportunity to be down there, and